So the first item on our agenda. Is the consent agenda. Did everybody have a chance to review the folder?
Yes.
I'll move to Perk.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
So is there any other discussion or anything? Alright, so all those that approve.
Aye.
And all those that don't? Okay, so then the next item, I guess there's no visitors. And then no student representative, but we're moving right along.
Excellent.
He wasn't kidding when he says he's going on vacation.
Oh, do you leave tonight?
No, no, the student rep says I'm done for August, I'll see you guys in September. New business, see anything listed?
Yes, so there was an addendum that I posted on the website. And it referenced two requests, one under new business, one under old business. New business is the 1920 circuit breaker funding. And old business is superintendent evaluation.
So, we want to do the new business, which is the 1920 circuit breaker. That was something that Emery brought up that you want to discuss. You'd seen an email floating from somebody discussing that.
The circuit breaker?
The circuit breaker.
Yeah, you had a concern that the final budget appeared to be less than, it appeared to fund circuit breaker at a lesser rate than we had planned out.
Well, that's based on what I've read, and I think that's what I've shared. So I'm looking to better understand whether that's the case or not.
Okay.
This was the email that triad school districts sent over. They actually shared it with, I'm assuming, everybody on the committee. I think they sent it to all school committees in the state. With the concern that the circuit breaker in governor's budget or the final budget is not going to be what everyone thought was going to be. I don't know what it is, I could not find a lot of details around it. So I just wanted to bring it up and ask you guys.
So it is the number that, I don't want to say number, the percentage that we had projected and budgeted on, which was that 72%. It's just, the goal is the 75% that they always try to get to. And it wasn't that, but you're right, there's not a lot of detail around it. As of now, and I'm not sure why. But that usually comes within the first few months after the governor's budget is approved. As to the detail around at least circuit breaker. So I can certainly, we can follow up on that and...
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, the way, the way they sent it with numbers that seemed to be specific to Granby, I got alarmed that, you know, they were alerting us to something. So thank you for that, thank you for looking into it.
Again, circuit breaker is a moving target, it's a projection. It's a, again, the goal is to get to 75%. We usually get 72-ish percent. And we budgeted at 68% reimbursement. So, we're right there, which is fine. We get less, when I say we, all districts are getting less than what was projected, but we're where we budgeted before, so.
So we took into account the fact that they were probably going to budget lower.
Yeah.
And then if we got more than that, we were going to call them.
So aren't we technically getting more than we budgeted? Because she said we budgeted at 68 and ended up at 72?
So, yeah, so those final numbers will come out. The other thing that plays into it is the fourth quarter reimbursement in circuit breaker is always, well, I shouldn't say always, usually more than the first three quarters because of the way they set money aside when the governor first signed the budget. So again, it's a moving, it's a moving target. What I can say is that what we budgeted on circuit breaker will be funded adequately with what was approved in the governor's budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
When do they normally wrap that up? I guess with the final number?
I mean, it should be, it should be after the first quarter usually. But I will certainly look into it and I can, I will get back to us.
Okay, so we won't, I guess what I'm going is, we won't really know 100% for sure until sometime early next year.
We, yeah, again, usually the fourth quarter payment, which would be in like this time next year, is usually more than what we projected to be at. And it's just based on some surplus that they have, certain formulas in the allocation, they're different. So, again, it's a moving target, but what we budgeted on and what we are funding with what we budgeted on, we're, there's no gap, so.
Okay.
Anything more that we get is beneficial to us.
Right, I'm just like, you know, like Emery, I'm a little bit more concerned about not getting even what we projected.
Yeah, so it's an ongoing conversation. The reimbursement percentage is, it's not going to get to 75% as much as we want it to. 72, I think, is a pretty, is a stretch these days. But it's, the best thing that we can do is kind of look over the next few years on the special ed kids that will be losing, who might age out, who might graduate, and kind of get a really good projection on what our claims will be. We can kind of stay out in front of that and have those numbers. But again, it's a moving, it's a moving target, circuit breaker. Unfortunately, we have really no control over it. It's one of those, it's one of those pots of money where they kind of like borrow from to, if they have to balance, you know, anywhere else in the budget, so.
One more question.
Yeah, yeah.
Please forgive me. Is this, this is another one of those where the money we get this year is based on last year's data?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the point you just made of if we know, like if we project a few of these, these people starting to age out, we'll get the money for them the next year, so there'll be a little bit of a buffer?
Yeah, so they've already aged out, but we're just getting like the money for them. It's in a year, in a year, so yeah, there's always a year lag time.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have any, anyone to ask or add?
Thank you.
Alright, I guess on to old business. The East Meadow School Project. Are we, are we at a point where we can officially close this out? Or do we need that committee to officially hand us over the building? Is that kind of what we're waiting for?
So...
Sounds like yes.
Yeah, so again, there's still some ongoing, I don't want to say repairs, just some ongoing things, like, you know, odds and ends to get everything together. There's no, I guess there's no official like handing off of the building by that, by this committee, but you know, we need some signed documentation. Yeah, or that building committee. We just need MSBA to say, yes, you can now, you know, the building is now yours. I'm not sure what the building committee needs.
So I reached out to Mark a little late, so I don't have a response. I just texted him again before this.
Yeah, they're on the...
And I'll find out. But what I did after our last meeting, I reached out to Colliers and I shared that, I think, with Mike and you guys. To find out where we are in our warranty process. And I was told that for the addition in East Meadow, the warranty expired February 26, 2000, actually started February 26, 2018. And renovation warranty started August 1, 2018, which means the last of our warranties technically expired at the beginning of this month, which was the renovation piece for East Meadow. But Adam, who responded to my email, also let me know that there are certain things that they are, they keep on working on. And if those things started before the end of the warranty period, they're going to continue to look at those and make sure that they are completed. If there is anything that was missed and then, you know, it emerges somehow, I don't know what the process is for that. Some of the things that Bill mentioned last time, you know, a little...
Flashing or something with the window?
What was it?
It was like flashing or something on the window?
Something, some light or a window or some...
Water in the window, right?
Hopefully those things were already part of their discussion in other way. If that's the case, I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. Going back to your question, my understanding is that the school building committee has to meet at least one more time, have this final conversation to wrap up everything and then sign off on that and basically dissolve itself. Because there isn't much left to do for the school building committee at this point. But the school building committee is still an appointed committee. We got our appointments from the select board and Chris sent us our papers. So we still have the purview to look at what is and what is not in the context of the project, but we have to meet probably at least one more time to go through the conversation and the list and then, and sign off on that and dissolve ourselves.
Okay.
I don't know what it means, I mean, I got all this, but I don't know at the end what that means. So here's a couple of things. The punch list technically has been completed, that's what Adam says. However, when the commissioning agent came out recently for the 10-month follow-up to check all the mechanical systems, there is a meter that he wanted installed and that will be delivered and completed by that week that I was corresponding with him. So there are some things that may come up as folks from the state, MSBA or elsewhere, they come and visit. Those will be taken care of because they're going to ask for those things to be in place. The last thing that they, he mentioned is the landscapers. They're going to come back in the fall to oversee because that's the best timing for them to really do the seating.
Now, if MSBA, MBSA?
MSBA.
MSBA comes back. They're not the ones that would find anything additional for warranty issues, right? Like, and if they did find something, would that, I mean, like how does, what are they looking for when they come back to be able to turn it over to us? Because that's, is that, that's the last step, right?
Essentially, yes.
So do they do a walkthrough?
They have, they already have.
They've been doing several.
Yeah, they've been doing them.
Right, so is it a final inspection? Like, do they, do they have their own punch list and do we know what's on their list?
No, so when that commissioning agent comes out, that Emery just...
Yep, he's from the MSBA.
Yeah, so there's two different lists. There's a punch list, which is kind of like the odds and end things that either we can take care of, Colliers can take care of, whoever. Then there's the commissioning agent's list that is like he's coming out to check that stuff and that certain line item won't be signed off by him until it's complete.
Okay.
So that's the real list that needs to be completed before we can officially take, I want to call it, ownership of the building.
Do we know what else is left on his list?
I'm not sure, I don't think there is very many items out there. I'm pretty sure a lot of it is ongoing things that have just continuously either not worked or they've been replaced and are still not working that are being looked at. And then there's not many things that are like, need to be replaced or added except for this meter. We should be pretty close to having everything all finished up.
So, again, not to be redundant, there are, there are two separate sets of eyes looking at it. We are looking at it because we are in our day-to-day operations noticing certain things that may not look fine or that may look odd. Then Colliers or the contractors get notified and just they come in and do their things. Up until August 1, it was all part of the warranty anyway. If they started anything, they are going to do that. The other sets of eyes is from the state side. They signed off on this project with the understanding that certain things were going to be in place. They actually counted every single piece that went into this project because it's how they reimburse, it's how they account for the dollars on the town side, on the state side. So they want to make sure that everything that they think is, was supposed to be part of this project is in place. And that example that I just shared was the commissioning agent's 10-month walkthrough. And everything, and he did it with John, John Sullivan. Everything was fine, everything was as it should be except for that one meter. And he asked that one to be fixed and that was being done that week as I was corresponding with Colliers. So there are multiple eyes taking care of the project.
So I guess my question is, is do we need to keep this on our, our old business? And if so, at what point do we move it off? Is it when MSBA signs over the building to us and we call it done? Because our list is done according to Adam, right?
I would actually wait until the school building committee dissolved itself.
Okay.
Because we don't really have any purview as a school committee over the project, but we are also the, you know, the stewards of the school district in a way. So we want to make sure that we are able to have these conversations, that's why we're keeping it there. If there is nothing, there is nothing. But at this point, it looks like we are very close to wrapping up the whole thing. In fact, it may be wrapped up. I don't know what else Bill is discussing as far as what may be left over. But other than that, it looks like based on this email, everything is on track, everything was discussed and the punch list was, was already gone over.
Yeah, and I know it made sense to keep it on there because we were talking historically a lot about the punch list, making sure that we've had a good shakeout of stuff and making sure we had the right list, everything was consolidated into one place and people were all working off the same list. I was just trying to get a sense of, like, right now, from our perspective, it's just kind of winding down, we're just waiting for the I's to get crossed, you know, the I's to get dotted and the T's to get crossed and then we can officially take it off our agenda. Okay. Alright, then moving on to our next favorite subject, which is the roof project. I saw some stuff up on the roof over there, so I'm kind of excited.
Yeah, so actually, this should be some good news. Yes, so they started on the roof, that portion of the project. So removing the old roof and laying the new roof down will be completed prior to students returning to school. The mechanical portion, which will kind of be ongoing through the fall because there are some delays on receiving parts, will probably go throughout the fall, probably the first month and a half of school, but will have no impact whatsoever on instructional, instructional time in the school. So that's essentially where we are at right now.
So what do they have up on the roof that would be the mechanical pieces?
Like the vents and all the HVAC stuff, you know, any, any heating, ventilation, all that stuff. Some of the parts are weeks out. So that will, again, will be ongoing through the fall, but will, it will have no interruption to the school life.
So what they, what they may need to, they'll reinstall what they may need to reinstall, I guess, until they get the replacement parts? Is that kind of what they, like if there's a vent that needs to be there?
Yeah, so as far as I understood it, nothing will be taken out unless there's a piece to replace it. So I think for now, I'm not, and I don't know the specifics around what parts are out a few weeks, but all that's happening now is the old roof is getting taken up and the new roof is getting put on with all of the old HVAC components up there. When those materials come in, then they'll, they'll be replaced.
Just want to make sure there was no hole saying, oh, that's...
No, 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 no. And there's, there's weekly, now there's weekly meetings every Wednesday morning with the building committee, Roy Brown, who's the architect, Greenwood, who is the contractor doing the roof, and Kleberg, who is the mechanical engineer. There's, there's meetings every Wednesday morning for updates, questions, all that.
And everything is looking like it's going to be on schedule?
Well, we're already off schedule, so, yeah.
Well, I understand that based on the news.
Yes, yes, yep.
So there, if any, if they come across any, any issues when they're going through doing this, they'll let you know at one of those Wednesday meetings?
Yeah.
And did they, do we know if they were going to do any, any testing because of all the water that we know is in there? Like mold testing?
Type of testing?
Mold?
Yeah, I know they were doing test cuts. I know, I don't know what the test cuts were for, but I know after last Wednesday's meeting, Greenwood was going to do test cuts. Again, I don't know the specifics around that. So I don't even want to speculate, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, one, what they were testing for. I don't even know if we have a right to know, but I'm curious to know, like, what, what it is that they're testing for and, you know, because that, that was a concern that was brought up, we talked about it and I'm still concerned about it as a mom. Like, that roof has been bad for a while and I'd like to know if they found anything in there and, you know, if they, because that opens up a whole nother set of issues if there is mold, there's the whole radiation thing. And then that's where I'm worried that if, if they do find something, which hopefully they will not, that goes back into my whole thing where what's our plan B.
Yeah, I don't...
I'm still concerned about it and I don't mean to be the negative Nellie, but, you know, my kids go to school there.
Again, I don't even want to speculate, so I don't know. I can certainly raise that question, but I don't know. I'm not, again, I don't know what the test cuts are for, I just know that's something they have to do. But I can certainly bring that to Steve Sullivan's attention and he can...
I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Can Steve join us next meeting?
Yes, so he's on vacation, so yes, he will be here. He will be the one reporting on the work.
Okay.
Just a couple more things. So the gym will be completed last, just because obviously that's the least important portion of the building. And we have moved preseason volleyball, which is the only team that would utilize the gym before school starting. We moved them over to East Meadow, so it wouldn't interrupt the scheduling of them doing the roof.
And the gym is also, makes sense to do last because didn't we have them do a fix to the roof beforehand because it was the worst part? So now it's sort of like...
Yeah, well, they, they're just going to do it last because obviously it's non-instructional and if there is any backup, we didn't want it to be over any of the classrooms.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
The easiest thing to do, there's one team or a couple of teams using the gym, so we moved them over here and then that way they kind of had, once they got past the instructional portion of the building and they got to the gym, they could...
Awesome. It was very comforting to drive in and see like, yay, they're doing stuff on the roof.
I didn't know to look for it because I read the, I read the thing and shared the folder.
Yeah.
So I was like, oh, let me, let me look for that.
So they should be done, the new roof should be out within two weeks and less now because they've already started, you know, a couple of days last week, so. But certainly before the school, the kids get back to school.
So a question now, similar topic but changed direction a little bit. So the roof has been bad for a number of years, we've had some issues, especially on the second floor with the ceilings. Do we have to start looking and addressing these ceilings for the next couple of years and trying to replace some of those? I don't know if the gym, I know some of the classrooms, I've heard stories about like just having to put tarps up or something.
Water spots.
Yep, so the facilities crew, as leaks happened, replaced ceiling tiles, which is just part and parcel to the work that goes on all the time. Those can get stained for, you know, a variety of reasons, so, yes, we do it all the time.
I just wanted to make sure we talked about it because I wasn't sure if that was something that we would do or if we would have to go to another community in town and maybe get, you know, some money for it or get that laid into some sort of a capital plan or something? And if we started that now, then it might...
By 2027?
Well, if they're done, it's just regular maintenance.
It's just regular maintenance.
Yeah, it's just replacing ceiling tiles, which we, which we have started to do even before the roof was, was going on, so. Yeah, that would just be internally, that would be us just maintaining it, replacing as needed. But yes, that would, it would be internally.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure and I thought I'd bring that up now while we were talking about the roof.
I would hope after this new roof is on that we don't have any leaks, but...
Oh, but the next thing is how long is the warranty?
Yeah, yeah.
Then the next item, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody else have any questions or anything they want to talk about on the, I mean, I guess we're all really excited that it started and see visible signs of it, right? And it's supposed to be done before school starts, right?
Yeah.
Yay!
The next item we have here is the dean of students.
So you had asked for the job description and Bill was able to send this as the job description, so it's in your folder. It is dean of students, so would you like me to read it just so that if people are watching? Okay, so, "Under the direction of the principal, the dean of students will work cooperatively with the principal, counselors, nurses, staff, students, and parents to create a positive school climate, supporting proactive leadership to engage all stakeholders in the delivery of programs and services to support the students' growth in academic achievement, personal and social emotional development. The dean of students will serve as an instructional leader in the planning, coordination, and assist in supervision of school activities and programs, including curriculum instruction, assessment, student conduct, and attendance, athletics and extracurricular programs, school plant operations. A dean of students does not require an additional license, however, a supervisor/director license would be preferred. We are asking for a minimum of five years demonstrated successful teaching and/or counseling experience at the elementary school level. The position will be a Unit A contract, in the Unit A contract."
Is this internal?
This was internal, yes.
Did we receive any interviews yet?
We interviewed three candidates today.
Three, three from internal, all right?
Three from internal.
What is your plan? It's great that you've already interviewed, I love it, but what are we, because we had talked about if that person is chosen, then we need to get on board with tobacco, right?
Right, so we do have people in the substitute pool that are licensed that could apply for an open position. And I think that's the goal right now.
Did we, I know we talked about it, I can't, I can't remember. Did we keep this as a one-year or perpetual? We kept this as a one-year for now?
Nothing is perpetual.
Well, I mean, as long as we had the need for the position or if we just put a hard date of one year, because I know, I know we talked about both directions.
So we wanted to evaluate it, right, and see?
And because of the internal interest, I think it is a unique position for someone to come out of a classroom that has been here, so wanted to give them, the person, an opportunity to evaluate as well, both sides.
Cool beans. Love it, moving right along.
We need to, to do anything else because I know we voted on this last time, right? To allow the ability to actually start the process, okay. So, anybody have any...
When do you expect to wrap this up?
Mr. Latoy spoke to us as a group of interviewers, saying that he hoped to make a decision in the next couple of days.
Days, okay.
All right, so by the end of the week.
It almost sounds like we'll be able to finalize this with internal candidates.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Three wonderful candidates.
And then have someone in place before, so...
And then as far as, because it's a one-year thing, if we decide that this is working and we're going to continue, we'll work this into the budget next year, so that'll be the indication that, okay.
And then would that person have to reapply or would we keep that person going forward?
Would we keep the person going forward?
And then just hire, hire on a more permanent basis instead of a sub for, okay. Alright.
Do we, is it, is it too early to know what our numbers are for classrooms next year? Like, do we know specifically what we need?
Well, I didn't bring those numbers, I can certainly put them in the folder. I can talk to Bill and Stephen and I'll put them in the folder for you this week. I had them, I just didn't have them. I mean, we're adding every day, so.
Yeah, I know, I know it's always a moving target even through the school year, but it seems to me there was one grade that only had two, two teachers. And then there was another grade that we weren't really sure could go either way. And I guess the next logical thing to ask is if the numbers change in any direction, like specifically down for that grade, we were on the fence about, could that be the position that we really don't? And then it's really not a new position per se, I mean, you're kind of sliding somebody over and that, that salary thing stays flat, right?
Right.
So off topic, because you said it, now I'm just curious, when you say, when you say we're adding every day, is it across the board, do you know, or is it just mostly in the elementary school?
Before I went on vacation, I could have told you, but I've been on vacation, so I'm out of touch with... Before I went on vacation, I could have told you, but I've been on vacation, so I'm out of touch with, usually I get the call, you know, every day, like, you know, we're adding a second grade or a family just moved in, there's three children, but I'm a week away from it, so I don't want to say.
I heard from the office today, there's a family with three children coming in tomorrow and they just registered a couple more kids today. Here it is now.
It's a busy time.
I know it was like that last year too, when we were getting into this point in the year. All right, and then the item that's here, but in the invisible link, is the superintendent's evaluation. I'm going to ask Emory to lead us on that. I appreciate everything he's done up to this point as far as putting that spreadsheet together, which made it so much easier.
So, so nice, Emory, excellent job.
Thank you. So before we start, a few technical things. I'm calling technical a little cautiously. One is, this is going to be the superintendent evaluation for 2018, 2019. And as we discussed before, we're hoping that we're going to start the new evaluation process immediately in September, right? So that's what we decided. The four members of the school committee who have participated in the process are at this meeting today. Jen's participation was all the more limited because she just joined us, but she was able to contribute with her input as a member of the strategic planning committee and also as a parent from East Meadow. And I really appreciate everyone's, everyone's feedback, input, comments, which made it easier. So what I want to do, oh, let me just mention that this file is already in the folder. I don't know if you saw it. What I tried to do, I tried to keep everybody separate and then go to the summative. Same thing for the scoring and same thing for the comments. So if you go to the comments, you're going to see all the comments. I tried to play with it a little bit, so I went through and sifted to see whether comments were success stories that should be highlighted in green and then some of them, as you have seen probably, are read it out. Those are opportunities or questions or things that are remaining for you to focus on or for us to have conversations, continuing conversations going forward. And what I will do, I will give a summary of what we have done and I will turn it to the rest of the committee for your input, your thoughts, and if anybody wants, we can actually go through almost the entire comment section and share what we have with everyone. Again, just let me know. So the overall evaluation of the school committee for 2018, 2019 of our superintendent is, was very positive. The summative evaluation was proficient with three standards at proficient level and one standard at exemplary level overall. There were multiple exemplaries and proficiencies, but also there were multiple needs improvement or significant process which highlighted areas where we started certain activities and we're looking forward to hearing more about them and we're hearing, we're looking to hear about their finalization and the next, next stages of that type of work. I will highlight three key areas. The first one was related to the school culture. I think it was mentioned by everyone that you have done an excellent job focusing on the, on the school culture. And when we say the culture in our school district, I think the common thought was it's not just within the school buildings, but the way our community started to connect with our school district is improving and in many cases visibly so, so kudos to you and thank you for that because that was something that we talked about a lot and we specifically highlighted on our strategic plan as well. The second area that I'm going to highlight is related to your administrative team. Again, this is something that we talked about in our meetings in the last couple of years. We, as a school committee, believe that it is not only important for a leadership team to be together, to work well together and to think well together, but also would believe that it is important for them to have a trusting, transparent environment. You, since you joined our school district, had some rough patches in the sense that, you know, folks left and, you know, you have to replenish, but the way you have done that and you have built your administrative team was really impressive because we are, we are thinking that we are seeing the benefits of that of that team building that you successfully put together. The third item, which I am forgetting right now. Anyway, I was going to go through the entire evaluation at first, then I thought, you know, that I will talk the whole time and I don't want to do that. And that puts me, yes, you're welcome. I thought Adam would not want me to. Well, it will come back to me, I guess. I can't find it in my notes either. Yep, so I'll stop with that and when it comes back to me, I will go back to it. So, oh, the third item, obviously, the most obvious one that I forgot. It was the budget process. So, having been on this committee for seven years now, having my first year without major trepidations and major palpitations on top of that, and go into a town meeting where we did not have to ask for additional funds from the town, it was great. But that wasn't really it. That was the result of the work that was done. I will look at both of you. I think your collaboration was really great. It benefited our school district. It allowed us to better understand what was going on as we were putting the budget together. We really appreciated that as you put the budget together, you were able to identify areas of deficiencies, what we can do better, improved what we were, the way we were focusing on the budget, you improved that first. But also, we really appreciated the way you were connecting some of the expenditures in our 2020 budget with our strategic plan, our technology-based curriculum or technology-supported curriculum. The additional members of your team that you hired who will be able to help push forward some of the elements of the strategic plan. And also focusing on what is potentially are the priorities in terms of curriculum. Those were the main elements that were highlighted in the comments that we had as a school committee for the budget process. I will very quickly mention a few things that I said were highlighted in red. Those are opportunities. I don't think any one of those sections were really focusing on things that were not done well, but some of the, some of the areas remain as opportunities nonetheless. For a couple of reasons. The first reason is some of the things that you started, they are still in progress. And as much as we appreciate the fact that we are seeing the early fruits of those efforts, we are not yet at a point where we can assess the final outcome of what you are working on. So it's something for all of us to collectively keep an eye on and help you and support you to make sure that you get there. My personal addition to that list was related to our measurement of all those efforts in progress. I really think that it's a, it's a good gap for us. I say it with my continuous improvement mindset. If we can have a set of metrics that allows us as a school committee to look at and see how we are doing, where we are going, whether or not we are in the right direction, that will be a great addition to all those conversations that we are, we've been having. On the opportunity side, also there is, at times, instances where we are not prioritizing as well as we could or should. And what I mean by that is this, we are all excited about things that are going on in the school district and when I say we, I'm talking about the school committee. And I know that you are getting pulled and pushed from other stakeholders of our school district. That puts a lot of work in front of you. At times, some of those things were delayed, some of the things, you know, needed reminders. And what I shared with you, I think at our last meeting or the one before that, I will put it on the table, I think with the approval of our entire school committee and with all the candor, that you will continue to get requests from us and everybody else and you will not be able to get to all those. The important thing about prioritization is really for you as the chief executive of the school district to say, these are the things from a strategic perspective or tactical perspective, things that we can prioritize and some of these things that you ask for will not be done by the timeline that you put in front of you. That is really no harm in that. It will probably eliminate some of the conversations that we had as to why certain things that we had asked a few weeks ago or a few months ago are still not there. One example, a key example of that, for instance, is related to our website. The website becomes a critical element of our communication with the school community and community at large. And the website, from our perspective, is a critical piece because it not only allows us to put some good information in front of the public and the school community, but also allows us to communicate with the members of our community related to budget and policies and events and activities that we would like to invite them to. That was a major gap during last year. So now, I will give you an example of what I mean by you will not get to certain things. You told us during some conversations, I'm the only one doing it and I don't have time to really get to it. And we appreciated that. Didn't take away the anxiety that we don't have the website that we were looking for, that we wanted, but that is exactly what I'm talking about when I say, give it back to us and put it in front of us as a problem, so we can try to solve that problem together. There is really, again, in any organization that I've been part of, there is no such thing as everything getting done all at once, but that prioritization becomes important for us because, again, we are expecting a lot of good things to happen. We should be reminded by you that not everything is going to happen as quickly as we want. And I think the trust that we were able to build, the transparency that we were able to show in our conversations and our meetings will allow us to have those candid discussions. So I will stop there. I'm still hoping that you're not going to ask me to go through the entire set of comments because I really appreciate that there were a lot of comments. One question that I have for you is this. I created this spreadsheet, which made it easy hopefully, and we can, I already have some ideas to potentially make this a little better even for next time. But is this what we can send to Desi in this format or do they want us to put this on their own format? Okay, with that and probably with.
Or exemplar, yeah. Yeah, they're just looking for, David?
Yes, I'm.
Right, they're just looking for the.
They're looking for scores for the four standards.
So we can do that?
So they won't even see this, they're just looking for.
They just want the overall grade. What do you think of this? Do you like it?
Yeah.
Gave a lot of.
They gave a lot of information and it was, it was really helpful to do the goal sheet with the action, expected outcome, measurement, and achievement evidence. I think that was really just helpful in thinking about how to shape the goal, shape the actions, and then also have it aligned to the strategic plan, so.
You, and it's in the notes, we did not necessarily include everything
Right.
that could have been important information for the school committee and that's good because, you know, we're talking about all these things. This time it did not really lead to any gap in the way we evaluated. But, you know, the data manager, the curriculum technology coordinator or director, those were critical elements of activities that you were involved in related to curriculum, improving the, you know, databases and how we report out to the state and how we report out and will report out to the community. So that is probably an indication that a lot of things happened last school year. Which is, which is great and again, we're all excited and my personal thanks to you. It was really a pleasure working with you on all these things and thank you for getting us to this point and we, I look forward to a lot more in the coming school year.
Me too, I'm excited.
I just, again, to your last point, there was a lot of stuff missing, but I was able to kind of draw back on my own experiences and knowledge of things that were in play throughout the year, so I gave you credit for all that stuff, even though you didn't specifically list it out here, if that makes any sense. And I thought a couple of the biggest things were the climate here in the schools. I wasn't around for the stuff I hear in the past before you came on board, but if those stories are accurate, it's night and day and I do know from my own experiences in the town, there's been some, some significant issues that haven't cropped up quite so much over the last year or so. So that leads me to believe that things are on the right track. I also thought with the goals, most of these goals are very hard to look at in a one-year time span, but if you look back since you came on, there's a lot more, a lot more meat on those bones, right? Because the first year you're just kind of getting your feet wet and you're starting to deal with these things and then last year you were able to actually start laying the work for probably next year and in the future years. And I think that gets critical because some of these great things that we just did, like the budget process, we need to capitalize on that. We need to close that down. We need to not only do what we did last year, but do it even better, right? Because the process was great. I think Adam did a great job. I don't know behind the scenes all the work that went in. I did hear like.
He did exactly what I asked him to do. You have no idea what tomorrow's going to be like.
I just think, like, I didn't know all the pieces and maybe it's because we weren't as, as, you know, where we wanted to be with being able to talk about everything and understand everything. But this year you just opened up the windows and doors and everybody kind of see right through the whole thing, right?
But I think the biggest thing was the communication. It's getting the community involved, which helped a lot with how the perception out there, everybody talking amongst each other without really realizing what was actually happening here and letting them come in and sit down and go through the process also made a big difference.
And I think in fairness, we've tried to do that in the past, but I think this year you did the all call through the town and maybe that was a piece that made the difference, right? You had more people come in who wouldn't normally be here and maybe next year we look at that and we do that again, but maybe increase the number of times we do it just to get. to give people different options as to, like, lay it out in the call. We're going to do it three times, they're going to be on these dates, this time, this date, this time. I'm just throwing ideas out there, but in this way, here, when we get into the meetings and the town meeting, people are aware of it. Maybe they've been discussing it, they've had a chance to go out to the website and pull down the stuff that we've been saving out there, and things just go a lot smoother and a lot easier. I'm just saying, things like that, we really got to seal them down and.
Well, one of the things, sorry. One of the things that I think, and Emery's touched on it, Mike's touched on it, but from my perspective, you, the two of you, spearheaded by Cheryl, really forcing some of the joint meetings and having a lot more contact with the other two, with FinCom and the select board, I think made a big difference, and like you said in your evaluation, you know, for the first time in recent history, FinCom was on board with our budget and didn't come out and say anything. So that, I think, was huge, and your candor during that whole process, good, bad, sideways, upside down, really helped us, but I think it helped the community too, for anyone watching the meetings and, you know, coming to those meetings and seeing FinCom stand up there and be like, hey, we're on board with this. I think that's where we've made the turn, and I don't know how we capitalized on it, but I think it's great having Adam on board as a full-time person because I just finished my first full year, and I know when I started, it was TMS, and just having you here in this position with Cheryl, I think we're not waiting another couple of weeks for some of that information. So I feel like that's, like we're making these little baby steps, but kudos to you. Thank you for everything.
And again, to what Emery was saying, tying all of this stuff back to the strategic plan. So if somebody says, why are we going down this road, well, we can point back to strategic plan and say, this is what we laid out for ourselves as goals, and then this is what we're trying to do, I think was key.
Some of the things are, are going to be interesting to see this year with technology coming to high school, us focusing on some different reporting functions with the data manager, improvements on the curriculum with the curriculum technology coordinator. So that, again, brings back the prioritization thing. We're all excited to see new things and different things, but I, I hope that we are at a point where, in our collective relationships, that you will not shy away from trying new things. Because what I was able to observe the last seven years or so is that school districts are, many of them, most of them are very similar to each other. From policies to the way they do budgeting, the way they share certain things, from websites, from the way curriculum is implemented, everything is similar. And then we all sit down together and we start complaining about, hey, you know what, we really have to improve certain things. Where if we do the same thing over and over again, and we copy from each other things that we don't like, we're not going to improve. I think we are at a point where we have an opportunity to start experimenting with little things. You know, the conversations we're having about a school environment where the students now start asking the questions. They tell their instructors, their teachers, hey, these are the things that we want to learn, these are the things that we would like to get from you. I think that's going to, that's going to not only bring a different atmosphere to our school, but it may also change the schools, our schools, for our educators as well, and make it more enjoyable for them. Because it's different. It's, you know, it's a different, a different way of looking at education. And I hope that technology doesn't become something that is, that we'll look at by itself. And we had this conversation many times. Hopefully, technology becomes a support mechanism for things that we want to do in the school district as opposed to, you know, we have computers and we're looking at some screen. I know that that's, that's not what you want to do, but unfortunately, sometimes that's how it goes. I want to give you kudos also for the push on the mindfulness program. I know that we got a lot, a lot of feedback. Some were great, some were not so good, not understanding how this was part of an educational system, but I am very happy to hear the early feedback from our students, our educators, that they, they feel better that we have a program that is allowing them to relax, to calm down, to focus, and then do things that they really want to do in a way that they want to do it. So anyway, there are, there are a lot of, a lot of things that we, we can really talk about. It's just a matter of really getting to a point where we say, here are those things this year that we're going to jump on, here's how we're going to measure them. And my final personal note for you, if we can start taking the steps in our school district to bring that continuous improvement mindset, so not only your administrative team, but our educators, our students start thinking about making improvements to what they do, whether it's the way they learn, it's the way they teach, it's the, it's the way you guys focus on the budget, or, you know, make improvements in the school environment. One small increment, one small step at a time, I will be, I will be very, very happy, you know, as, as I leave in a couple of years.
A couple of years?
Yeah. That's what it is, right?
Yeah, you've got two years left.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us on anything?
No. No, I appreciate the effort. It was, you know, it's a lot to go through, and it's a lot to, you know, look at every single standard and think critically about every standard and what you know is happening, even if it's not listed as evidence. So I appreciate all the time that you took to think about that. It's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So what else do we need to do with, with this right now? Is this, is this done now? Or do we have to?
Are we done? But not done, done?
Well, this one is done. We have to send it to the state because it has to become part of their record. One thing that I don't know if you answered, but does Mike have to sign off on the summative? I don't remember whether there was a signature at the end or not.
Oh, there's a D.C. signatures page.
Okay.
All that I know of.
I'll look for superintendent news.
Right.
All right.
Well, we will check, and if there is, Mike, I'll call.
Yeah, I'm usually just right down the road for work anyway, so I can always take a few minutes at lunch if I have to decide it.
I think what we, what, what does happen is this can get loaded into Teach Point, and then that's the record.
It gets into Teach Point, and then it will eventually go to DESI.
All right. Because I just want to ask, I want to use the same format, at least next year, probably going forward, because it was, it was just so user-friendly. The, you know, knowing that some of these things, you know, boxes will have to change some with, with the goals and, and some of the new standards, if, you know, if the standards change. But with that being said, at what point do we start laying out the goals for next year, and do we see them trying to change all that much? Because a lot of this stuff is really just a work, you know, like.
Right.
It's, it's, it's still going to be there for a few years, the way I see it.
Well, the strategic planning was like a three-year process.
Right.
So if this is based on that, it's a three-year process with a renewal of a new strategic plan.
So I guess the first thing to ask is, where are we in that three-year cycle? Are we at the end of it? Do we have to look at that strategic plan again? If so, that has to happen before we look at this, right?
So I would say we have one more year to set goals on the current strategic plan, but one of the goals will be to start the review of the strategic plan, so, so that at the end of this year, you would have your next, three, five years.
Strategic plans need to be reviewed periodically, and they don't necessarily have to stay, I mean, you all know it, they don't have to stay the same way. There's certain things that may decide, we want to tweak, we want to change, whatever it is. So for that, it may be a good idea for us to devote part of our, part of one meeting or maybe meet separately to go over the strategic plan, to ask the questions that you just asked. Where are we? How much do we have left? Are we doing the right things, and what are we seeing as a result? You know, that, that would also inform us as to what we should start thinking about for the next iteration of the strategic plan.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to stay true to what we were talking about, trying to get this, at least the goals piece out, like the September, October timeframe. So would we have time in September and October? I know that's usually kind of busy with the students coming in to, to kind of set one meeting aside to go over.
Yeah. We've already talked about it at the leadership, district goals, which feed, you know, from the strategic plan into the superintendent goals, into the principal goals, into the teachers' goals at the school level. So it's more of a continuous feedback loop now, where prior, there wasn't that direct line between the strategic plan and all of the goals, and then, in fact, all of the improvement plans.
Okay. Right, I just, again, I'm just trying to stay true to some of the things that we've, we've set for ourselves, and we want to get this part done by September, October, so we're not trying to wrap it up in August, right?
Yep.
So at this point, we're all set with, with this one? Did anybody have anything else they want to bring up or say about it? Okay.
So as I'm looking at this, I just want to, again, for the record, mention that in each one of the standards, you were proficient with exemplars, especially on standard two and four. Standard two is related to the management and operations. That's where we mentioned your administrative team and the collaboration, and standard four is related to professional culture. So on those, I think the scores included multiple exemplars.
Do we, do we need a, do we have, so if I'm looking at line forty?
Forty?
Yeah.
On which tab?
On the summary tab.
Yeah.
That's really just for standard four, right?
Yes, it is.
Do we have a, a spot? Because I couldn't find it.
Yes, that's what David and Cheryl were asking for, that there should be one separate spot that highlights specifically, this is the overall.
Yeah.
It's proficient, but we have to make it visible, and then it goes to the state.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that piece was wrapped up. All right. Okay. Going on to standard reports. I saw a superintendent report.
Yes. Okay.
Picture on there.
I did.
Question?
Close to.
Oh, I think, that's why I questioned.
So the Grammy Junior State High School roof project has begun. As Adam stated, the roof portion of the project will be completed prior to students returning with the secondary ventilation portion or mechanicals ongoing throughout the fall. We have been very busy preparing for the return of staff and students. We have met as a district instructional leadership team in August. We prepared professional development, and we also prepared our goals for the new school year. We introduced our new curriculum and technology integration specialist to the ILTs, and she heard from both of the school ILTs about the work to date, and so Beth Craven is developing her entry plan, and will be presenting that at some point in September. It really truly is an exciting time to be part of the Grammy Public Schools. It feels like all of the important foundational pieces are here for us to really move into that innovative curriculum, technology integration, partnerships with STEM and STEAM, all of the things that we've been talking and dreaming about, we have the foundation for. So we're very excited about that. Our garden at East Meadow continues to produce food by the bushel. Students hopefully will have fresh vegetables upon their return, and I just can't not say that the meadow is like the hot thing in town. Like, I can't tell you how many people stop every day, take pictures every day, and I do hope that Christine O'Neill doesn't mind, I stole her portrait of her puppy in the meadow at East Meadow. Everyone is just truly enjoying that space, and I know it was a long time coming, and people had lots of questions, and it looked really ragged and when it first went in, but patience paid off on that one. And not only is it beautiful, but it really is ecologically sound and an investment for kids. The amount of wildlife that we're able to observe now outside windows of the classroom is just amazing. It's, it's a huge difference. So that's my update.
I was driving by the other day, talking about pictures. There was, I thought there was a family, it could have been, with professional gear, a curtain, a reflector, the camera, and they were taking pictures of the kids.
During July for summer school, you saw that more and more. Not only were people in the middle of the meadow taking pictures, they were around the outside clipping them to take, you know, take flowers, bunches of flowers to people. Yeah, it was quite a popular spot for the whole month of July when we were here for summer school.
Yes. I think my favorite was the blue gown. Yeah, I don't know if it was a prom or, but it was just beautiful, the way the, the blue was against all of the flowers. It was, they were, they're just so excited to get.
It was a hot spot.
Excited to have them.
And I think all, all the stuff that people were saying.
I know, right, yeah.
Mow it down!
I remember that very clearly.
Yeah, tits, yeah, tits.
Well, I also, I also like, I don't know who put the sign out there, versus, I'll look at the meadow now or something like that.
Look at our meadow now. It was on the sign.
Yeah.
Mr. Looks like.
Yeah, that is what it was.
You know, and that's okay. I mean, not everyone's going to see everything the same way.
Right.
And it's a matter of saying, you know, like, let's just, let's just wait it out.
Let's wait it out.
Just give it a chance, and I think everybody likes it now.
We didn't know. I, I had no idea when, you know, when the landscaper said, you know, came in and said, well, you know, it's East Meadow, why don't we do a meadow here? We're like, okay, you know, I'm picturing kind of like Queen Anne's lace and a couple of, you know, Black Eyed Susans. Like, okay. I mean, that is amazing, and to know that it's just going to get better and better.
I can't wait to see what's next. Like, I don't know my flowers well enough to know. Like, I'm looking forward to see what, what fall is going to be and, you know.
Yep.
Well, I have to admit, I was one of the ones that said, you know, you've got the beautiful building with that ugly stuff in front, and you got the beautiful one in front of the other building that isn't so good-looking in the back. Maybe they should kind of switch those.
Taking selfies on it.
CES.
We'd be happy.
Oh, kidding, that's fine, no?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Do you want to?
Okay, so we'll do FY twenty-first only because that requires a vote. I put that into the folder. All that is, is Governor Baker signing the final version of the budget. It increased our revenue by about forty-one thousand dollars. So I just want to make sure we vote on that final number, and then FY twenty will be all set.
I'll make the motion to approve the final fiscal year twenty budget of eight million five hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
One second.
Anybody have any thing to ask, or, because I do.
Does it have?
Sir, since that increased by forty thousand, does that, does that forty thousand go in to kind of offset some of the, some of the pieces that we?
Yeah, I mean, all, yes, all it did was reduce some of our offsets that I was using. Yeah.
So that's good then, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. We're going to get more money.
I just know there was one point where things kept changing, and I was actually saying, do we have enough of these offsets to not put ourselves behind the eight ball?
Yeah.
pushed for a change in the formula for funding. It didn't happen. They, you know, went on summer vacation without that. And yeah, school systems got more money, but it's not done. Just so, it's not done. The Fund Our Future push from the MTA, it's not over. It really needs to be, that formula is so outdated, and if it was the way it should be, school systems, larger school systems, not only the rural ones, would be in much better shape. So just know that you're still going to hear about Fund Our Future and the MTA pushing for that formula change.
Yeah, we're going to continue.
I'll be out there.
I appreciate it.
I'll be out there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Robyn.
So FY nineteen, I'm still, I'm going to say we, so myself and Chris are still working on reconciling. I have received that file that we got last year, that spreadsheet that we got last year. Chris has already sent it to me. Unfortunately, I haven't gotten too much time to look at it, because I'm not sure if everyone knows, but Nancy has been out, Jalavet has been out sick for two or three weeks now. So I've been kind of picking up that portion of it, and Chris has actually been an extremely good resource for us these last two warrants. He's, he's kind of helped us out and done us a big favor. I am meeting with someone tomorrow morning, some relief, I hope, for the time being, until we kind of figure out what's going to go on moving forward. So that's been kind of taking up a lot of my time. But we are working on closing out FY nineteen. I've been contacting Chris, we've been talking via email every day about certain things, so we're, we're on the right track. We'll definitely be ahead of the game compared to last year. Just a couple quick, like, facility updates. One thing, just a big thank you to David and Stacy, but we've gotten all of our one-to-one computers in, I believe. They are in the process, David and his team are in the process of getting them all set up physically on desks, in the labs, and with the appropriate software. So that's been a big push over the last few weeks. I think we got a handful of them that we might have to send back that were either damaged or...
I think you were like, out of the hundreds, a piece of equipment, it was kind of a four, I had to go back at either the slot or the shipping process or whatever, and have to take it through.
And the vendor, you know, has expedited everything, so that's one thing, that's been ongoing. And David and his team have done a great job. There's been a few hiccups along the way, but that should be all set for kids to get here. Two, the custodians have been working crazy. We are understaffed by a custodian, so it's been all hands on deck for the last month or so, so they've done, they've done a great job. Inheriting our own facilities department has been, I think, tremendous. I, I don't know if anyone's really noticed, that it actually looks nice out front. We've pulled some bushes, mulched, we have a regular mowing schedule, so that's actually worked out pretty good. We are going to be repairing the high school sign that's out front. A lot of the brick has been damaged and just weathered and aged, so we actually just hired someone to come in. I'm not sure when they're going to start, but they're going to re-brick that all, and we're going to kind of just dress it up around there, because it's the main focal point on two oh two for the, for the high school. So we have some things in mind to kind of spruce up the front of the building. But that whole facilities department, they've been working nonstop all summer. I, 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 I and the principals and everyone else have put a lot on their plate, and they've been doing a great job, so I just want to let them know that.
Before I forget, I'm going to interrupt. Do they still do class gifts?
They do.
Do you ever make requests for class gifts?
We do.
Okay.
In the last, I would say, three, two to three years, class gifts have really almost been instructional resources that teachers have requested.
Okay.
As opposed to, like, you were saying, the sign, which was the gift of the class of, you know, such and such, so.
I think it was my year.
Yeah, we do. There's people who request, and we let Stephen know.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Cool.
So really, just in summary, we've been doing a lot of stuff externally and internally the building to kind of get ready for the school year. The summer's flown by.
Are the doors good? Like, do we, I know we got the grant, are they all done?
Yeah, so that's out to bid, I believe.
Oh, oh, oh.
If it's, it might even be through the bidding process, and we might be, I don't believe we're opening bids yet, but that, that's ongoing. So as soon as that happens, we'll have, we'll get the new doors. I think that's a late fall thing anyway, was what we projected. But there is a lot of things going on in and out of the school, so.
Did you get the final invoice from Chartwell?
Yes.
How, how do they do?
Well, so that's a, the month of June one, it was like eleven thousand dollars, so that's another account that I'm in the process of reconciling with Chris. So we started the school year in a deficit, just based on unpaid balances, nothing with Chartwell's. We'll still be in a deficit where that's at right now. We're still waiting on reimbursements and stuff, so that's why the end of the year is kind of, a lot of the stuff won't happen until July and August. So I'm closing that out with Chris, and I will, I will send an update once I have those final numbers.
Just to understand, currently, we are looking at deficit, but when everything is said and done, are we still going to be showing out little profit?
Yes, so, so, and it's hard to explain. They will return the profit, right? Our food service account will have a deficit, but that's only because of unpaid balances, some, some other things, not anything that Chartwell's has done. Their overall operation will return a, a profit. I don't believe as large, and I say large, they said twenty-six hundred dollars. I don't think it's, it's going to be that much.
Is that profit or our deficit? What is that twenty-six hundred dollars?
Well, so the program ran in a, in a surplus. Our food service account started in a deficit at the beginning of the year.
Do you have any estimate of where we're going to end up, what that deficit is going to look like?
Yeah, well, technically, it'll be zero, because I will use some money to transfer, but it will be around about six thousand dollars, so.
So I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand this piece of, that's being discussed. I know January or so, Chartwell's was in here saying that we were down, I think, three to five thousand dollars, and we thought it was supposed to be more. Is that the piece that ended the year in a plus, where they're thinking it's twenty-six hundred dollars profit? Or is it the accounts that were down three to five thousand, and that's kind of where they're going to look at?
No, so when, when they were here in, was it January, February? Yeah, so it was, there was a few things. One, we lost some value in our commodities, because, and I think we talked about this, there's a report that Chartwell's thought we submitted, I thought they submitted, we lost some value in our commodities there, which played a part into some of that deficit. The other part was vacation days, food costs were higher, some labor costs were higher during those months, but they made that all up throughout the rest of the year. So that deficit that they talked about then had been made up over the next five to six months.
Okay, so that deficit we talked about, they did what they said they were going to do and brought it back up, and even went past the zero mark and into the plus side, right? Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
And one of the biggest things, and they talked about that, and we kind of touched about this, was obviously closing one school, consolidating that, the labor rates were down. Commodities, for the most part, were relatively cheap, so again, I think the relationship between me and Ken and even Mike, who's Ken's boss, the communication, and me kind of staying, I don't want to say on top of them, but us meeting and communicating, kind of, you know, it's going to yield a pretty good, a pretty good year.
So you, you mentioned that for this year, you would bring the account to zero.
Yeah, which we...
Is that what we do?
Every year, yeah, every year. It's what we're legally supposed to do.
Right. So based on that, I think the other side of the narrative was that the reason why we have a deficit, deficit on our side, because we started with a deficit. Well, if we're, if we legally are supposed to bring it to zero, how do we still have that deficit?
That's a good question. But we won't start that way next year.
Okay, so this is going to be the first year?
Yeah, you're supposed to every year. So, so any deficit in your food service account is legally supposed to be covered by local funds, which is a transfer at the end of the year to wash that out. That didn't happen at the end of last year. I'm not sure for what reason, maybe there was an overlap, but when I started, Mark ended, there might have been some miscommunication, whatever it was, it never, it never happened. It will happen this year, so we'll start at a zero balance in that account. Again, that, that, what doesn't help is when we have accounts that go a couple hundred dollars in the hole, they go unpaid, we get an invoice from Chartwell's, then we, you know, we are, we're automatically starting in the deficit, and then we kind of have to work to make sure we chase that, that money. So, but yes, the legal requirement is that the local fund covers any deficit in the food service account.
Thank you.
So, in summary for FY nineteen, at some point when that is all wrapped up, I don't know when our next meeting is.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-something?
Yeah, probably.
Two weeks from now?
By then, it'd probably be maybe that, that first meeting in September, I'll have a...
It should be the twenty, twenty-seventh is what I have.
Yeah, twenty-seventh, that first meeting in September, I'll have a...
Well, would you look at that? Thirteen plus fourteen is twenty-seven?
I'll have a pretty good picture of it, nineteen.
Guess who's in charge of the calendar now?
I went to Grammy Schools, I can do math. I'm good.
I like that little promotion.
You're welcome.
And she did it in her head quickly on the fly.
After looking at the calendar.
When, when, when do we think we're going to wrap up and be ready to send to the state? I know, I know last year...
Yeah, the report's due by September thirtieth.
Okay.
So that's the latest that it will, it'll be done this year.
Okay.
A lot of the delay, not a lot of it, most of the delay last year was kind of me getting in in July and trying to learn the structure and all that, and then having to report out on numbers that I didn't really, you know, know. But the communication between Chris and I, at least, overall, it's been great over the last few months, and then more specifically for nineteen has been great. So I don't see us having any, any problem with that.
Okay, so...
And nine thirty is the submit date, so at the latest, by September thirtieth, it'll be submitted.
Okay, so what you're saying is just by nine thirty, FY nineteen should be off of our, you know, off of our stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's when the report is due to the state, yep.
Okay. Does anybody have any other?
No, I really, I want to say that I really appreciate hearing that we are working very closely with, with Chris. This, again, is one of the things that hopefully started improving, and, you know, it's going to get even better, so thank you for that, and thank, you know, thank Chris for that as well.
CES, did you, have you guys met?
We have our next meeting September twenty-fifth.
September twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm.
All right, West Street Building Committee, I probably didn't talk about that.
Nope, we may have a wrap-up meeting, or maybe a couple meetings, but not yet.
All right, and then all these other subcommittees, I don't think we've...
Can I ask a question on that? Are we still coming to the next meeting with the intent of spending time on these subcommittees?
That was my question I was going to ask. It's like, at what point do we switch over to that new structure? Is it in August, or do we wait until September? I know we wanted to get rid of, or, you know, get past the summer.
I thought we had said that we were going to start it in September, so to make, you know, get our stuff ready for beginning of school, make sure we were good, but I could be all wet. I could be completely making that up in my head.
Either way is good. I just wanted to, I just wanted to confirm that we are still intending to go with that alternating schedule.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I haven't thought or heard anything, you know, different up to this point, and to be honest with you, I am getting a little bit, you know, concerned because there is some work we have to do in, you know, these subcommittees too, right? So the sooner we can...
Well, should we just plan to do it then, next week? Next to twen, whatever, we just said the twenty, um, seventh?
And for, I believe for our first meeting in September, may I suggest that we add our superintendent's goal? No. What do we do first? Yeah, we start with the goals, so can we start the process, the first meeting in September?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, yeah, the sooner we start that, but I, but again, do we start with the goals, or do we start with the...
I don't have them for September.
I don't know, I think we determine that our strategic plan is good for this year, right? So it's really just the goals at this point, right?
Right.
But then, throughout this year, I think we, we need to discuss how we want to approach looking at our strategic plan next year, right?
And actually, you set your goals as well.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So there's school committee goals that you're going to have to do, and then superintendent goals, district goals, superintendent goals, and it all feeds.
Okay, so, 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 Emery, do we, do we start with Cheryl's goals, or do we start with our own goals first at the next meeting, I guess?
Well, here's the thing. Every year, I think we kind of tipped ourselves by saying, wait for our goals, and we're going to wait for your goals. I would say, let's just go with our goals, you go with your goals, we go with our goals.
I'm good with that.
Hopefully, the goals will meet.
Because at the end of the day, the idea was this, we did not really have a strategic plan that was, that was good enough for us to follow as intended. So we always went back to it, trying to tweak it, and it kept us, kept the superintendent from really following that strategic plan. This one is not that. This one, we already see that, what we set out to do, we are really trying to implement what's in the strategic plan. So for that reason, I'm confident that we're going to be okay if, you know, Cheryl comes back with her goals without waiting for our goals to be in place. In our goals, we should, since we got into this conversation, we should decide what we are expecting from ourselves for our goals as well, I would say. Because last time, I think we got into this bifurcated conversation, one was, are we supposed to align with the strategic goals? If so, isn't that going to be redundant? Or are we supposed to come up with goals that are specific to the way we act as a school committee? We should decide what we mean by that, and then go ahead with our goals as well. Probably it's going to be a combination of those. I don't suppose that our goals have to be aligned with the strategic plan the way Cheryl's goals will be aligned with the strategic plan.
Okay. I'm just trying to remember how we, how we kicked off our goals. Was it, did, did, we didn't have a little workshop meeting on that, I don't think.
I thought we just did part of it, we dedicated part of the meeting to go through.
Yeah, I mean, I thought we did something, we did, we each talked about something, or we each rated something, and with that, we determined where we felt, I'll, I'll have to go see if I can find those, those documents from last year, so I can kind of get a sense of how to proceed.
So, just to be clear, are we going to do the subcommittees on the twenty-seventh?
No, apparently we're working in September.
We're going to wait until September.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a, it's a normal business meeting on August twenty-seventh, and a normal school committee meeting, business meeting on September tenth. I would say we would want goals, superintendent goals and school committee goals on the tenth. You'd want to start that conversation.
Here's a suggestion, as soon as you ask. Absent of superintendent evaluation, this meeting was pretty light. If the next agenda seems to be light, can we just say, let's start now with the subcommittees?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, like I said, I'm not even sure that I remember that right. I just thought we had had some conversation about that, that there's always stuff that comes up right before the school year, that we didn't want to plan and eliminate the ability to be able to have a business meeting, because we, so I, I'm just going to shut up now.
So just to restate then, August twenty-seventh is going to be subcommittee meetings.
So, yeah, that's, the question is, is when we post for the meetings, we have to post for the subcommittee meetings too, to put it out there just in case we go into that, and then if we decide not to, because we have too much other stuff, is that going to be an issue if we just called the media, the, 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 the subcommittees off and just stuck with the business meeting, I guess is... So, yeah, that's, the question is, is when we post for the meetings, we have to post for the subcommittee meetings to put it out there just in case we go into that. And then if we decide not to, because we have too much other stuff, is that gonna be an issue if we just called the meeting? The, 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 the subcommittees off and just stuck with the business meeting, I guess is?
Well, actually, we should know before our meeting, right? If our agenda is loaded or not, and we should, we should go based on that.
Okay.
But in either case, we have to post it, whether it's subcommittee meetings or a committee meeting, we have to post it.
Just wanna make sure we don't forget something that. Okay. So do we have an executive session tonight?
No.
No? All right. Cause I think we're at the end of, at the end of the agenda. So it's hard to remember how to adjourn without, without an executive.
Take a motion.
Second.
Got all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?